Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record, there are two of us present, Commissioner Githens and myself, Commissioner Thomas. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And the Board of Commissioners also wishes to voice our support for the graduate students and their fight for union recognition and better pay. So kudos to them and good luck on their battle. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is department updates. And first, we have Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm so glad today that I could join you by Zoom. I've got, I'm trying to juggle a couple of different meetings at the same time. So Zoom is quite handy in that event. And we are seeing an increase in cases in Indiana as well as in Monroe County. Our hospitalizations, however, is remaining low. We're not seeing that same increase. Most infections do appear to be less severe, so we're pleased about that. We did experience some late reports last week that gave us really a little bit of a pause. We had one day where we saw a large number of cases reported. And that was actually, as we dug deeper, we found that the vast majority of those were from that winter surge. And for some reason, they had not been reported earlier. So we're glad to know what happened there. However, water sampling is supporting the determination that there is more virus that is circulating in our community. We are still seeing some increase in cases, just not the dramatic one-day increase that we saw. So we are staying very watchful for the numbers and the data and what's going on. Again, our hospital numbers are remaining low. However, these increases may affect our community level a little bit. And if this occurs, we would move from yellow to orange on that CDC community level. The biggest driver for those community levels is hospitalizations. And as long as those remain low, we shouldn't move beyond an orange community level. Those are updated on Thursdays and the CDC numbers can lag behind. So I just am saying this for awareness, that people understand that we are seeing some increase in viral activity. But we also had a large day of reporting, and both of those things could affect our community level. If we move to orange, it means that if you have health concerns, underlying health conditions, talk to your physician about what precautions you need to take. Should you be wearing your mask when in public? Should you be taking other precautions and follow that? And there's not a lot of difference other than that. So stay vaccinated, stay up to date on your vaccines, and test as appropriate. So again, that's for awareness. And the other note is our community health assessment report is finished. It is being posted today on our website. And today, we launch our first of two community meetings where we will discuss the assessment and begin the process of looking at community health improvement plans. So today is from four to six, that's at Switchyard Park Pavilion. And then Saturday will be 1:15 to 3:15 at the Banneker Community Center. That information can be found on our website or on Facebook on our social media page. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I saw on the front page of today's New York Times that it's estimated that up to 60% of the population has had COVID, which is pretty astounding.
Yeah. Number. Excellent. Thank you so much for the update, and we will see you in a little bit. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a department update from Sheriff Swain.
Good morning. I am here to happily announce the fruition of implementing our Lexipol policies and procedures that were not just patrol side, but for the jail assisting me is Bill Conway, who has been with the sheriff's office and county government for several years. He was the project manager to ensure we stayed on track with this program. Two years ago, I approached the commissioners about supporting this program. There was a grant, a federal grant to Indiana sheriffs to pay for the implementation of this program. And I financially supported the first years support of the ongoing support of the program with Lexipol out of commissary funds. And after we completed the patrol side, we then immediately jumped into the jail division, which is a separate program for an agency our size. One of the issues that we had when I took office was we had separate policies and procedures updated or implemented by different sheriffs, and they were in different formats. Some were just printed materials scanned, others were created on Word documents. So it was just a mishmash of policies and procedures. You actually, we had trouble finding them. If an employee needed to make a reference, that was difficult. With Lexipol, we now have a searchable database by word search for any policy or procedure. And these are even accessible by telephone, by an app on the phone, or by in-car computers. And just doing a search term, a deputy or a jail officer can find a policy or procedure at a moment's notice. In addition to this program and implementing it, we found that we had a lot of policies that were not really, that were lacking and needed updating. So with Lexipol, there's a combination of our existing policy, best practices, constitutional considerations, as well as state law. And so all these things are combined to make the best possible policies that we could have. And in addition to the new policies or updating present policies, we found that, we can go to the next slide. That we found that we were lacking in a lot of other policies. We also found in researching some things that we're supposed to have employees assigned to certain tasks through OSHA and other organizations. We selected Lexipol because they have state-specific policies and are written by subject matter experts. And the, as I said, the initial cost for this service was through a grant to the Indiana Sheriff's Association. And then the next slide, Bill. So we had working groups selected with myself, the chief deputy, operations officers with the jail, of course, we had command staff with the jail. And when we would cover a specific subject matter such as canine policies, we would incorporate canine officers to provide information that they would have to contribute. There were 160 policies and 40 procedures in the law enforcement manual covering aspects of our operation. The same, the correctional center had 100, as you can see here, 159 policies and 48 procedures. And one of the benefits of having the procedures put into the system is you may have something that's very important but low frequency of use, especially some detail within the correctional center where an employee could look up and find out what the proper procedure is. Included with this, so you can see just in this list here of our manual, just how intensive it was. And it was going over every single policy we had in making all those comparisons. So we would meet once a week to revise policy and research, and then another day to work with our Lexipol representative to upload information, share ideas. Generally, we had done a good enough job that it was a pretty simple process on their end. They didn't have to handhold us, as they have had to do with other areas. And here on the next slide, Bill, as we had said, these are searchable. You can see the statutes are referenced. If there's a particular document associated with that policy that an officer might need, there's a hyperlink, so all of that is right there at hand. So it's a one-stop shop for anything to do with our policies and procedures. In addition to that, we also have daily training bulletins. So it's a good way of tracking that officers are keeping updated on policies. And I have found that if something has happened that has become newsworthy, that I've directed our manager to bring up and create a daily training bulletin on that subject matter. And the one most specifically that I can recall was when the officer accidentally shot a man thinking she had a taser. I know they're all talking about this. Send out a daily training bulletin on our electronic devices, electronic restraint devices, because it's fresh in their mind, and hopefully, as time goes by, they will develop a curiosity if something happens. Well, what is our policy? Is it up to date? And officers were allowed to provide feedback on these policies as they were adopted. So we created or had Lexipol create a daily training bulletin. They didn't have one yet. And when I contacted them, they thought that was a good idea. They sent it out to every single Lexipol customer they had. It also provides good tracking, especially now that we have well over 100 jail and patrol officers. It provides tracking that they are reviewing and they are taking the daily training bulletins. And we don't do this every single day. We set out a few subject matter training bulletins. And within their work rotation in a given month, they are supposed to take the time, review, and document. And there's tracking on that. The other thing is when an event might happen, that we want to check our policy. Is it up to date? It will track if we've changed and updated. We had a pursuit recently in which a person crashed into a tree and died. We took a look at our policy. One of the things I found was, we talk about termination of pursuit, but what does that mean? A little further research, we found that the police academy actually had updated recently and provided instruction. That would be you will stop your car, turn your lights off, get out, walk around the car. Instead of does pursuit mean you drive the other way, or do you just turn off your lights? Or whatever, we added specific instruction. We also have the ability to show when policies were changed. And the reason why would just be offered on a specific issue. So these are available in PDF form. If we have a particular policy that we think the public might have an interest in, we put those on our sheriff's office website. So rather than people having to ask if we would get repeated inquiries, say, on our use of force policy or something people have an interest in, we just go ahead and make that available so they can go directly to that link on the website. I would also add that there was a couple of bumps in the road with how the Indiana statutes were set up on Lexipol. Myself and other sheriffs that were adopting it ran into some issues. We found that their state statutes were lacking. They seemed to reflect more on chiefs of police and not sheriff's offices. And we had a meeting with Lexipol that resulted in them having an all-hands-on-deck to address the problem. The result of that was they sat down with an attorney that a lot of us sheriffs use and actually hired Mr. Conway to assist them in getting that lined out. Monroe County developed a great reputation with Lexipol. We were probably the fastest organization in Indiana to go through our policies and adopt and have the program launched. What we found here is that we hope that it reduces liability. It keeps everybody up to date on training. And as we see here, we have a record of our members acknowledging the training and reviewing. Some policies, if we revise them, we send them out for officers to acknowledge, and it will highlight the change in that particular policy so they don't have to hunt and peck and search for the change. And then they acknowledge they've read and reviewed it. We may have a policy where we just change some grammatical issues or a spelling issue, and we do a silent release because it's not important for them to know that. And they're not overwhelmed with a bunch of nuisance acknowledgements. So at this point, both of them are up and running, with the jail especially. We pushed policies out and had them enforced as we went along with final approval. That way, they weren't just given an entire policy and procedure to be updated on. And I hope that the next sheriff continues this policy as all the hard work has been done. And our staff is using it. One issue that I recall was when Deputy Driver was killed. We were at the hospital, and you can imagine everything going on, trying to decide what steps we need to take. And I went, well, wait a minute. We just went over line of duty death and what we would do. I pulled up my phone, and I said, let's start following these procedures. And the first thing was that we need to have a liaison assigned to the hospital, to the family. And what we had spent the time on, just a couple of months before, on this particular matter, came to guide us through that tragic event and the following days that carried through. And all of our employees were in the loop. I would say, just look at the Lexipol program section on line of duty death, so you will have an idea of what the steps are, working with liaisons, with cops, and through it all. And so not only did it provide command, their guidebook to follow, it also kept employees in the loop, so they weren't given hurry-up-and-wait-type instructions. And that was just one example of the various benefits of this program. So at this time, if you have any questions about it that we can answer.
I remember when we passed on this, and so it sounds like it's really been very useful to the whole department, and it benefits everybody. So I'm very pleased. It originally was grant-supported to start with. And so what are going to be the ongoing costs to the county? Do you have an estimate?
I don't have the dollar figure at this point, but I find it's just the simplicity of it now and the ability to update. It's actually a living, breathing manual in a sense that if a new court ruling comes down, we go immediately into our policy and see if we have to change anything. Recently, there was a red flag law ruling. And we just yesterday took a look at our policy and found that it, the ruling did not affect our present policy. But it's just having that habit of, here's a new court ruling, here's a change in the law. And so here's our procedure. Here's our procedure. Are we still in line, or do we need to update? And if it's an important update, we send that out, and all the staff acknowledges it. Come January 1, with constitutional carry, we have some real challenges with that. And how we deal with someone with firearm. So in short, we'll let them go on their merry way, not being able to know what their background is. And if they had criminal intent, then they keep their gun and they just proceed on to FedEx building or whatever. So, but the cost, I can provide that here in the future.
I don't actually have the number. I want to say it's like 7,000 is coming to my mind, seven to eight. Because the original was in fact covered by the, I think, ILE or what it indicated. And then the county has agreed. It just comes out of our software line.
Well, it sounds like it also saves a lot of staff time on things, and so it's a nice trade-off in my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. And by software line, you mean Team Capital Development Fund?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other department head that wishes to offer an update for us this morning via Zoom? Okay. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is public comments. This is a time allotted on our agenda for the public to make comment on items that are not on our agenda. Each commenter will have a total of three minutes to speak. This is also true during our agenda items. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. It looks like Jim Shelton is joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, but speaking at the moment on behalf of Court of Point of Special Advocates or CASAs. Want to alert you and the public that the summer training for potential volunteers is coming up. It will start June 6 and run through June 29. It'll be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. At present, on Monday, we were just told that there are now 61 children who are in the court system, and the court has asked the CASA office to provide a volunteer, and we don't have a volunteer. This number is increasing. In fact, Kristin Boucher, the director, has reached out to existing CASAs like myself and asked us to consider taking on a second case to try to control this surge. So it's a time that we really need people to step forward and volunteer to help deal with this problem. The training will teach you everything you need to know. There's no special qualifications to be a CASA. You'll be trained, and then you would be sworn in by the court, by Judge Galvin and Judge Harvey. And you would be assigned a case, which you would work along with one of the CASA staff members. So you'd always have somebody to help you to fill in if you had to be out of town for a court date, et cetera. So it's a wonderful volunteer opportunity. It can be very satisfying. I had a case finished just before Christmas with the little guy being reunited with his parents. And just out of the blue, I got a text from them last weekend. It was his fifth birthday, and the family was out for dinner to celebrate it. So they sent a text to myself and to the case manager from DCS, and worn both our hearts up, I know. And this is the kind of result that can come back from your efforts to help these children. So please consider it. The applications will be due here in the next couple of weeks. Then you would be interviewed, and then you would have the training. So thank you for the opportunity to share this information with the community.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton, and it's really a heartwarming story. So thank you for that. All right. Any other member of the public wish to offer comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to our agenda, to our next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from April 20, 2022.
Second, any notes and corrections?
No, but I really do like the fact that in the minutes, they've added when something occurred, the time.
Yes.
So it's really easy if people want to go back and review the video of it.
Yeah, good point. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 20, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket for accounts payable, April 27, 2022.
I will second that, and we have Mr. Miller joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $657,665.45. There were two larger claim items that exceeded $100,000, starting with $172,190 for John Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep, for three 2021 Dodge Durangos for our sheriff's department, and $104,172 for Monroe County Fair Association for the 2022 fairground appropriation.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I just want to point out to the public that when we get these sheriff's vehicles from John Jones, it's with the light bars and all the other electronics and stuff that have to go into these vehicles. This is not the standard vehicle that you or I can buy off from a dealer.
It's a good point. Yes. Totally outfitted.
Yes.
Got it. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable, April 27, 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of E&amp;B Paving LLC agreement for Carst Farm Greenway North segment. Fund name, next level trail grant. Fund number 9107, in an amount not to exceed $20,876.60.
I will second that, and we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Whitmer, here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. This is on the finished north section or segment of the Carst Farm Greenway. It is between Ellet Still and Woodyard. It is a culvert that we need to insert a 24-inch diameter dual wall to slip it in, and also to make the culvert a little longer, so it'll be stronger to hold the trail. We also need 80 feet, give or take, I think it's 80 feet, of linear fence also. And it will be paid 70% by the NLT grant, 30% by the cash match from a bond.
Right. Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions?
When I saw those pictures that you included in our packet, it's clear what the need is, so yeah.
Well, it's about 100 years old now, so if we take care of it now while we have grant funds, it's a much better deal for the county.
Wow, you realize it was that old. Yeah, excellent. I appreciated the pictures, too. That's a good point. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board. All those in favor of approving the agreement with E&amp;B Paving for the Carst Farm Greenway North segment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of precision concrete cutting agreement for Carst Farm Park. Fund names.
Fund names, county general and non-reverting, fund numbers 1,0179, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer, tell us all about that.
Yes, we're very excited actually about this project. I don't know if you've noticed, if you've been on the sidewalks in the city of Bloomington recently, you will see the sidewalks, some of them are cut down. You think they're grinded, but they're actually cut. This particular company, we called them, and they're coming back to Bloomington. And they gave us a very reasonable price to take care of our problems at Carst Farm Park. They'll just take their equipment out at Carst while they're also here in Bloomington. So it's quite a deal. This way, we do not have to replace concrete.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions?
I try to get to as many of the Parks and Rec Board meetings as I can. So I've heard about this before.
Excellent. I don't have any questions either. Sounds like a smart move. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the precision concrete cutting agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Next item, please. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of runaway and homeless youth sponsorships with the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation. Fund name, runaway and homeless youth professional services, fund number 8120, in an amount of $2,500.
Right. I will second that. And we have Ms. Nasby here to tell us all about it.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Bridgette Nasby, the Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator over at YSB. Today on these contracts, we're just requesting the signatures to work with the parks again to promote the visibility of the Safe Place Program and of the YSB services. And these contracts actually utilize our runaway and homeless youth grant funding. And each of these contracts and sponsorships promote those programs and services over at YSB. And we want to use our pro-social community events and youth activities to create positive youth outcomes for kids in our community. So we've got a couple of different things that we're going to do. We're going to sponsor the youth basketball. We're going to do five different events throughout this year. So we're pretty excited about that.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, the glow in the park function looks really fun.
It is. It is super fun. Last year was my first year and I, that was my event. I get a lot of light up, I get as many light up things as I can when I go out to those events.
Great.
Well, but also there are two skating events at Frank Southern. When I first saw it, I thought, okay, are they rollerblading? Or ice skating? So it's really fun to see that.
Yeah, super fun events, great events for kids to get out and do. So I do encourage families and youths to go out. And I've been really happy with the parks and doing as much as they can to keep events safe as well. And so that's been something I've seen over the last couple of years and doing as much as they do. So we really appreciate that, too.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the runaway and homeless youth sponsorship, City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of the MOU agreement with Impact Solutions, fund name JDAI Alternatives, fund number 9145, in an amount of $1,200.
I will second that. And we have Ms. McAfee joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning. It's great to see everyone this morning. Yeah, this is using the grant funds that we were awarded back in July of 2021. And Impact, as you may remember, helps us be able to visualize the data that we're sharing with the community and our stakeholders. So instead of just raw numbers, they make it super interactive. It's really very powerful to see it. Their skill level is about an 11 on a scale of one to five, and mine's about a two on that same scale. So this dollars just allows them to support our efforts to get the data out there and show the good work that we're doing.
Excellent idea. Comments, questions?
I appreciate the explanation because when I read through the packet, I wasn't quite sure what this was about. So thank you, Ms. McAfee.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. McAfee. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room or you can raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the MOU agreement with Impact Solutions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Arnold Ventures grant funding via Indiana University. Fund name to be determined, fund number to be determined, in an amount of $25,000.
I will second that. We should have, I don't see her on the Zoom screen. We should have somebody from the prosecutor's office. I don't see Ms. Hamlin here. Okay, does anybody have information about this?
My, my understanding is this, they were going to request that this gets tabled due to needing to fill out some of the items in it.
Right. I'm going to move that we table, well, we continue the Arnold Ventures grant funding item to our next meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of continuing this to our next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-09, an amendment to zoning ordinance, chapter 815.
I will second that. And we have Mrs. Nestor Gillan, the Director of Planning, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm going to go ahead and try and share my screen here and give a short presentation and then I'll go through the ordinance with any changes that you'd like to talk about. So this is ordinance 2022-09, and this is a text amendment to chapter 815, which is in regards to our site plan reviews standards. This amendment is to revise standards for certified plot plans as well as certified site plans and scaled plot plan drawings. So the biggest thing that I want to go through today is what the impacts will be of this text amendment. And then I'll also get to the text amendment, what it's actually entails at the end. So the biggest impact of this text amendment is for people that are building brand new, single-family residential structures. Right now, we have people that will submit just hand drawings for new, single-family residential structures. And it's a small percentage of the cost if we ask people to submit a certified plan for something like a brand new construction of a single-family or two-family home. So that will be the biggest difference is they will now be asked to submit a certified plan by a surveyor, architect, or engineer. What is going to stay the same is for commercial construction, they're still going to require certified site plans. And then residential additions, remodels, new accessory structures, detached or attached, will still be able to submit a scaled plot plan drawing, though in some cases it may be warranted that you'll want to hire some sort of professional to certify your plans if there's any concerns over buildable area on your lot. So we have worked to get the word out on this. There's a press release online informing people of today's hearing and hoping that we would receive any comments. I know I received one phone call and have had conversations with other departments. So that's, I haven't heard as much as I would have assumed. And then also on the Open Gov website, there's been a note put on the site that when you check new construction, it states that beginning April 27, 2022, you may be asked to submit a certified plot plan for your new construction. So we did do an analysis of all of the single-family residential permits. This was between February 24 and September 16 of 2021 to give us an understanding of how many people are currently submitting scaled drawings versus certified drawings. So when they submitted, about 53% already submitted with certified plans. After review, there was another 6% that were asked to please submit a certified plan. And they were able to do so, but the 40% that went through with scaled drawings did proceed as is, but under the text amendment would be asked to submit a certified plan. So that's, I think I have some numbers over here, but 40% of 95. So for this text amendment, we reached out to five design professional groups in the county. And we do have data at the end of this presentation, if you'd like to look at any timeline and costs that we received when we did that reach out. And then we also received feedback on the actual text amendment from four surveyors and a one building association representative, as well as other county departments and made various edits to this. It's been through the Plan Commission, I think it was heard possibly four times. So some of the benefits that we have for requiring a certified plot plan for new residential structures is so that people can understand where the property lines are located and prevent them from building over lot lines, which is a lot more costly than doing an original certified plot plan. We can also have them illustrate areas of concern such as steep slopes, carst floodplain, any drainage concerns, and avoid locating structures in those areas, which again is more costly. And then they can also show areas on the property where new structures can be located. When you go to sell your property, it's helpful and people often look for some sort of survey to say, where can I build additional structures? Can I build a pool? We get a lot of people that call after they've purchased and want to build something and then are told that they don't have the area to do so and they didn't realize it. So I think this would be also an asset for people trying to sell their home. It also provides assurance that county ordinances are being followed. So setbacks from property lines, carst areas, outside of the floodplain, et cetera. And then it's also helpful documentation, as I mentioned, for current and future property owners. And hopefully, I think, will save money in the long run and protect both the environment and the public. So this ordinance did receive a favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission on February 15 by a vote of seven to one. And we are here at the April 27 meeting. And I just want to make a note that if there is time or if you would like to continue this for further discussion, the 90-day mark is May 16. And we are, the planning department is in support of this favorability to this text amendment. So now I'm going to present the text amendment itself. So starting under chapter 815, I believe the copy that may have been posted is actually the clean copy, but I will just talk through some of the changes that are being proposed here. So 815-3 has been changed. And it is including a new table. So the table below is going to tell you, based on the type of construction you're proposing, as well as the use, as to what type of plan you'll be required to submit. And there is a little bit of administrative discretion because there's some overlap between the uses in both the plot plan and the certified plot plan. So under the table, you'll see that it says either commercial structure, residential structure, or residential accessory structure. That's how we broke these out. So commercial structures are staying the same, requiring a certified site plan. Residential structures, which is new principal use structures being constructed on a site, is a residential structure. And then residential accessory structures are the items that can still allow for a scaled drawing by hand that does not have to be certified. And that would be things like remodels, additions, accessory structures, pole barns, things like that. And then below, you'll see that this is tied to chapter 802 and 833, which are all of the uses that are permitted in Monroe County under each zoning district. And so all of these uses should tie back to something that's in the chapter. And then further below, this is where you get into the list of what will be required on your plot plan or your site plan. And these letters correspond below to all of the requirements that will, that will be asked. So here we are on A, B, and C. A is saying plot plan to scale, B is certified site plan, and C is certified plot plan. And so if you're building a new residence, you would follow the blue residential box and look at the different standards that are required below. Many of these standards are staying the same, but there are some changes that are being requested. And if you'd like, I can pull up a markup version of this as well for the public, if that would be helpful. The, I also want to point out that when working with surveyors in this area as well as the public, we did make an amendment to J at some point along the research spectrum of this. And so we made a change to say that if you have a site that's equal to or greater than two and a half acres, instead of requiring a full survey boundary, that we can do a deed of record illustrative property boundary. And that will save people quite a bit of money that have sites that are, say, 100 acres and they're going to build just one house on it. So we wanted to take that into account. And then I know the Highway Department has been very supportive. The Stormwater Team is implementing new permitting requirements through the state. And so this will also correspond with some of the things that they're looking for to make sure that there is positive drainage away from new builds, because we're still seeing new homes being constructed even the last few years that have drainage issues. Many of this information, much of this information is the same, but as I mentioned, I can pull up a markup if anyone would like to see the before and after. But we're hopeful that this text amendment is clear and easy for the public to read, and we are open to any amendments that are requested or that come up if this is able to be adopted. We want to make sure that this works for the county and and for the residents. So I can take any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I know in the past, there had been problems with downstream from new builds. Will this help to address that?
You mean as far as drainage?
Right, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. So one of the things that we've been able to improve upon in the last few years is making sure that we have the latest construction plans and taking into account the elevations that are supposed to be built for structures. So I think that having this information such as spot elevations will make us be able to go back to those preliminary plans and that grading plan to make sure that homes are able to be built at the elevations that were originally proposed. So I think it is a step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion about this, Plan Commissioners, you noted. And I think that there is a bit of an upfront cost for a new resident residential build, but I think it is well worth it investment wise, as you noted, because of the information that can be provided to future owners. But property lines are important. And, but especially as Commissioner Giffens noted, the drainage issues. Protecting the homeowners who already exist and already have homes is so important to do. And this, I think, provides some measure of that protection that we've needed for a while. So I'm really glad to see that this has moved forward. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom, you could raise your hand. Good morning.
Good morning. Randy Cassidy, just citizen regards to what I have a comment and questions affect me on an individual basis in no way at all. But I have a question and some concerns in regards as we move forward on this text amendment. And we look at the aspect of what is considered a small cost. When, as we all know, in this room in our community where we're struggling with affordable workforce housing at the present moment. And not only the small cost, which I would ask the question of what is that cost of that certified plot plan that is necessary? And also what the timeframe to acquire that would be based on the professionals in the area and the timeframe that they have to do these. Because like anything, you have to take them in the order you get them and stand in line. And given the uncertainties of the financial market. And given the uncertainties of the financial markets, the mortgage rates, and even the aspect of what we're looking at nowadays for material acquisition and costs, while it may seem like a small thing, those can quickly spiral into additional costs that may put us outside an affordability aspect. So the plot, the lot lines, the criteria of building within our criteria and what our ordinance is, is very important. But we need to also exercise that with the caution of the citizens that want to be in Monroe County and how we can help that from a cost standpoint. Because while it's a small cost, and we're at a $250,000 affordable house, in my forty years of being in this construction industry, the affordability has went to a struggle of being able to keep our young people to be able to house in our community at a cost-effective rate. So while it seems small, we need to be cautious as we move through this. And I'm, I'm unsure if we've had conversation with Monroe County Building Association on a, Association on a meeting basis to help identify what those costs are, so we can keep these at the lowest rate. So we keep that continual cycle of caring citizens living in Monroe County and not just commuting in, because that's where you get your heart, is those that live here. So I understand, I have no issues on a personal basis at all. I'm just trying to look at the long-term impacts of these little things. So I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Cassidy. Appreciate that. Ms. Nestor Gillan, did you want to address any of the comments?
Sure. I actually do have some data from the design professional companies for timeline and costs, so I can go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So I did reach out to three companies, and three provided the timeline, but the last one did not provide a estimated cost. And I just didn't want to disclose their names, because they had asked to go ahead and make this general so that they're not held to certain quotes, because it's contextual sometimes on the lot size and other factors. So the first design company said that it would take about four to six weeks to produce a certified plot plan. The second company, three to four weeks. And then the third company said two weeks, but possibly more, based on workload. And the cost does vary based on whether the lot is platted or not. So in a platted subdivision, looking at somewhere between $450 and $1,200. And then unplatted is between $1,200 and $2,500 for one company, and then $4,000 to $6,000 for a different company. And so based on some of these outreach conversations that I've had, we did go back and add the illustrative property boundary, because we found that the full boundary survey for some would be very cost prohibitive and maybe not necessary, especially if they're able to double or, or meet their setbacks. So those are some of the quotes that we have been given for cost and timeline.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Other comments?
And I do want to mention, I know it's not a very small cost. I did mention that it's a small percentage of the cost of a house. It's, it's not a small cost in general, but a percent of the cost of a total new construction. It is fairly small.
Yeah. Right. Any other comments or questions?
I find it interesting that last year, sixty percent of the applicants actually had the certified plot plans, even without this being in effect.
Right. And, and I understand the issue with, you know, adding to the cost burden for housing, but housing becomes unaffordable when there's, there are issues with flooding and other concerns that aren't addressed appropriately. And I think that can make an unaffordable house very unaffordable, and that's my concern, especially for neighbors who already have potentially that affordable home. But I do appreciate what Mr. Cassidy said, and, and it's something we certainly looked at and talked at length about during our Plan Commission meetings on this issue. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer public comment? Or either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom? You can raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Thank you so much. Did you have an interest in continuing this, or did you want to actually go forward and vote on this today?
I'm ready to go forward, but part of that's because Ms. Nestor Gillan does such a good job of calmly explaining everything that's in there.
Yeah. It, it is detailed. It's more detailed than it appears, right? And especially when we talked about working with professionals in the area and getting their input. And that took quite some time, and it was a very diligent process, so I appreciated that. All right. With that, I'm going to come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries two zero. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. All right. Item G, please.
Move approval of consideration of MOA for COAG school grant.
I will second that. Good morning again, Ms. Cole.
Good morning. Last week, we brought you two MOAs from two other schools. This is our grant. It's the COAG grant that we got to assist schools in dealing with COVID-19. And we are offering them, based on specific deliverables, an opportunity to have funding to help them meet some of their needs. So part of our requirement is that they have been in compliance during this grant cycle with all state, local, and federal regulations. So we have one before you today. It is from Seven Oaks. And we did issue a fine to them in August of twenty twenty-one, which is during this grant cycle. And we have received additional complaints during this winter. So up until the current, the local regulation was rescinded, our information would be that they were not in compliance with local regulations. So because of that, our recommendation would be to not approve this particular MOA. However, they did attest to being in compliance, and they, they did sign off on the agreement.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate the explanation. That was exactly my question. As I read through it, I was like, wait. Okay, good. Did you have any comments, questions? No. Mr. Cockrell, did you want to add something?
I did not, but I anticipate a question of, of where do you, where do you want to go from here? I guess you have two choices. If you, you could either vote on it to move to approve it, you could vote on it to deny it, or you could just not approve it and move on to the next agenda.
Huh. Interesting. Ms. Giffens?
My, it would be okay with not approving it.
So we will move on to our next agenda item. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Appreciate you. Next item.
Move agreement with first appraisal group for appraisal services, fund name county general, fund number one thousand, and a grand amount of $3,500.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, as part of our ever-changing look at, at the county, we are asking to get a appraisal on a piece of property off I sixty-nine and Fulton Pike, just to kind of figure out what the, what the, what it's worth. And see if there's anything we, we want to move on or do something with, but this is just the first step in a potentially really short or potentially really long process.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I'm glad we're moving forward.
That'll be interesting to get this done. Is there any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room, or you can raise your hand on the Zoom screen? I see none. We will come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with first appraisal group for appraisal services signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries two zero. Excellent. All right. We don't have any appointments today. A couple of announcements, however, so bear with us. We still need poll workers for Tuesday's election. Republicans can call Pamela Samples at eight one two three two two nine one one four. Democrats call Orion Saft at eight one two three two zero zero three eight nine. And I note that we do have a discussion coming up at the city council regarding the local income tax that begins at six thirty tonight. It's not clear whether that will be voted on tonight, or if it's just a continued discussion, but we do encourage Monroe County residents to go to this council meeting and offer their commentary. You can also attend via Zoom. If you go to the City of Bloomington's website, you can find the Zoom information and the packet for the meeting, the agenda for the meeting, so you can join that meeting if you wish. We have a couple of blood drives scheduled for next week at IV Tech, and thanks to IV Tech and our emergency management department for setting this up. Wednesday, May fourth, ten to three. Thursday, May fifth, one to six. I'll also note that we have physicians open on boards and commissions. So if you are interested, please join us and help Monroe County government get better and better by providing your input and guidance and your experience and wisdom. You can go to co.mone road.in.us and find the application there through the search. There is two, there are two scheduled meetings this week for the Community Voices for Health Think Tank. Tonight, Switchyard Park, four to six, well, this afternoon. And Saturday, one fifteen to three fifteen at Bannaker Center. Please join us. There will be childcare provided as well. And as this is severe weather season, it's a good time to sign up for our Resident Alert System. Go to co.mone road.in.us and click on the megaphone on the home screen and fill in the form, and you will receive alerts regarding weather events and other important updates. It's a great service that we offer. Any other?
Two quick things. Because I do donate blood, I get notices from the Red Cross right now. For people who donate, they will check, they're offering to test for COVID antibodies, so you can find out if you've had COVID. And then if you have, they're using some of that blood as treatment for people who are hospitalized with COVID. So I think that that's, that's really incredible that they're willing to do that. That's free in terms of what they're willing to offer you. Also, voter turnout is very low this season. And so we're trying to encourage as many people as possible to get out and vote. I feel like voting is the bedrock of our democracy, and so I want to encourage people to get out right now. You can early vote today through six P, through six PM, Thursday and Friday, eight AM to six PM, Saturday from nine to four, and Monday, early voting still, eight to noon. And this is at three oh two South Walnut Street in the new election operations. And then on next Tuesday, polls are open from six AM to six PM. And as you said, we still need poll workers. I want to encourage people to get out. So please, please help if you can. Please get out and vote. It's simple. It is fast. Election operations has, I'm told, space for twenty, or no, for sixty people at a time to vote. So, and parking is very good there.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, there's the, it's a huge lot, and there's plenty of space. And we are, just also a note, another way to encourage people to vote, Monroe County Government is closed on Tuesday, and our next meeting is going to be May fourth here at the Nat U Hill Room and also via Zoom at ten AM. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Well, with that, we do have a work session agenda, so can we come back at eleven fifteen to do that? Excellent. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you.